Township Edison's zoning board of adjustment, regular meeting of May thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five is now in session. Adequate notice to this meeting, as required by the Open Public Meetings Act of nineteen seventy-five, has been provided by the annual notice published in the Home News Tribune on December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four, and as opposed to the main lobby of the municipal complex on December eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Just to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Ms. Shaw?
Present.
Mr. Ayat?
Here.
Mr. Johnny?
Here.
Mr. Chabra?
Here.
Mr. Patel?
Here.
Mr. Schneider?
Here.
Mr. Devey?
Here.
Mr. Sedahad?
Here.
Vice Chair O'Gorman?
Here.
And Chairman Gumba?
Here.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary, minutes for consideration.
April twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-five, minutes for approval.
What's the board's pleasure?
Motion to approve the.
Motion made by Vice Chairman O'Gorman, seconded by Mr. Sedada. Roll call, please.
Mr. Chabra?
Yes to the motion.
Mr. Johnny?
Yes, in motion.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes to the motion.
Mr. Patel?
Yes to the motion.
Mr. Sedahad?
Yes to the motion.
Vice Chair O'Gorman?
Yes on the motion.
And Chairman Gumba?
Yes on the motion.
Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We have one announcement. Case Z thirteen, two thousand twenty-five, Lake Home Renovations at Seventeen Gene Place will not be heard this evening. It was improperly noticed. It will have, they will have to renotice to a later date required. If you're here for this case, Z thirteen, two thousand twenty-five, Lake Home Renovations LLC, at Seventeen Gene Place, it will not be heard this evening. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is a regular meeting of the Township Edison's Zone Board of Adjustment. The board is comprised of Edison Township residents, pointed by the municipal council, who volunteer their time and service to the board. The municipal land use law requires that members successfully complete a land use training course, administered by the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs. The board also holds in-house training conducted by our board professionals. The zoning board abides by the provisions of the municipal land use law, in addition to our board's bylaws. The zoning board is a quasi judicial land use board, which differs from the Township Planning Board. Under the municipal land use law, board members are required to be impartial and are not allowed to discuss any case prior to being considered at a hearing. All applicants will have the opportunity to present their case before the board, along with the opportunity for board members and board professionals to question the applicant and their witnesses. At the conclusion of the applicant's presentation of their case, the case will be open to the public. Residents within two hundred feet of the subject property will be heard, followed by residents from outside of two hundred feet. All residents will be sworn in. They'll provide their name and address. They'll be given six minutes to comment on the application being considered, without the opportunity for rebuttal. Residents may ask questions of the applicant, the applicant's professionals, and board professionals. The board requests that these questions are asked prior to any commentary being made on the application. Once commentary begins, the resident's timer will begin. The applicant will be allowed the opportunity for cross-examination of their witnesses. Under the law, the chair is allowed to stop any commentary which is repetitive or an attempt to filibuster the board. Further, the chair is allowed to stop any commentary that is irrelevant to the case or prohibited from the board's consideration. Once public portion is closed, all public comments are ended, unless new testimony is presented by the applicant. Following the closure of the public portion, the applicant will have the right of summation on their application. Following summation, the case will go to the board for decision. This procedure has been followed by the board and is similar to the procedures followed by boards of adjustment statewide. The municipal land use law requires the board to engage in a balancing act, is not required to strictly apply township ordinances, zoning plan, or master plan. As a board of adjustment, variances are granted when appropriately necessary, following all legal considerations. As has been the case with prior boards, this board will see where we are at if we're still in session around ten thirty P M. I ask that all applicants, professionals, and residents show respect to each other and be civil throughout all proceedings. I ask that you withhold applause, booing or interrupting of anyone while they are speaking. The chair will not tolerate any outbursts by applicants, professionals, or the public. Further, since most cases are being recorded by a court reporter, I ask that speakers do not speak over one another. Madam Secretary, first case on the agenda, please.
Case number Z fourteen, two thousand twenty-five, Hanif Popal at Eight Charles Street. Applicant is seeking bulk variances to construct a new single-family dwelling. The following standards have not been met. Minimum front yard setback required is twenty-five feet, proposed is thirteen point ten feet. Minimum side yard setback required is six feet, proposed is three point four six feet. And minimum combined side yard setback required is eighteen feet, proposed is thirteen point seven feet. Affected property is located in the R B zone designated as block number five four six point oh three, lot number seven zero point zero one, on the Edison Township tax map. All noticing paperwork is in order.
Is the applicant here?
Sir, pull the microphone closer to you. Pull the microphone closer to you. Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, self-y god?
Yes, I do.
Please state your full name for the record.
Hanif Popal.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, everyone.
Could you please tell the board what you'd like to do and why you'd like to do it?
Okay. I also provide a small summary of my situation.
Before you start, just bring the microphone a little closer so we can pick you up. Thank you so much.
No problem. I provided a brief summary of what my situation was. I provided it to the secretary. I don't know if you guys have a copy of that?
We do.
I can read it to you guys if you like.
Good.
Okay. So I'm writing, this is basically to offer some clarification on my variance application for construction on a small six hundred square foot ranch, with pre-existing, which is a pre-existing non-conforming lot. While the existing setbacks are remaining the same, and the F A R is also under limits. I also informed, I was informed by the building department that the construction changes to my approved application require the variance. The change that I had to make was to remove the remaining foundation, due to it being inadequate to support the two-story structure. Keeping the old foundation without any footings, which it didn't have, was a safety risk and could lead to failure. I had already been approved by zoning and building, paid the required fees, and started construction. Upon demolition of the rear side of the foundation, we noticed that the existing foundation could not be salvaged because it was missing footings, and thus could not hold the weight of the addition. Per instructions, we modified the plans to replace the old foundation to properly hold the new structure. But unfortunately, our work was halted by the construction department, stating that I had to now apply for variance for the work that was underway. This unexpected delay was, has been very costly to me, and it set me back many months on completion. I am committed to ensuring that all construction complies with township regulations. I kindly would like your consideration allowing me to continue my construction.
Okay. Is that your, anything else you'd like to present?
No. So basically, my lot and many lots around my house are non-conforming. The setbacks that I'm applying for variance on are setbacks which preexisted, even with the ranch as it was. It was a small, one-bedroom, one-and-a-half bathroom house. As I mentioned, just six hundred square feet. I wanted to enlarge it. My lot is almost per requirement, which is seventy-five hundred. Mine is about five square feet short of that. But the setbacks on the side yards and the, and the total yards and the front yard weren't met even as it was. So I'm being asked to apply for variance in order to complete the work.
So out of the three variances, all three were pre-existing?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Does the board have any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Davey?
Is this the original survey of the old house?
Yes.
And you are keeping the same setbacks the way they are?
Correct.
And you had approval for the demo and new construction from the building department?
It wasn't considered new construction. It was an addition slash renovation. You were going to keep the old foundation and then kind of raise it.
No, no, but when you say renovation, it means you were keeping the old structure. If you're demoing up to the foundation, it's a new building. It's a new home.
I wasn't aware of that. I was notified that if you demolish more than fifty percent of the structure, that it is considered new construction.
So are you keeping fifty percent structure?
No.
So you completely removed the house?
The foundation remains. The upper structure is removed.
Foundation remains? The foundation is gone as well. You said it was not sufficient. You removed the foundation as well.
I did not remove the foundation. When we had the inspector come out to take a look at it, he noticed that the house, the old foundation didn't have any footings. We're building a two-story structure. It was a ranch. So it wasn't going to be.
So who determined that the foundation is not sufficient? Your structural engineer, your builder?
The architect. The architect and the contractor.
Okay, and you are removing the whole foundation?
Yes.
And putting a new foundation?
Yes.
Mr. Ayat?
Yes.
Mr. Davey, Mr. Davey, we can go back on record. Mr. Ayat, are you in agreement with, are you in agreement with the applicants?
Right. So you realize that once the old foundation is gone, the old setbacks are gone as well. You can't just say that you are going to keep the old setbacks even though they are non-conforming. You realize that, right?
I guess so. Where the house stood is where I want to rebuild the house.
Okay. Let me clarify. Once you remove more than fifty percent of the existing non-conforming structure, it loses its non-conformity. You remove the entire home down to the foundation, now you have to start with the new setbacks and you have to conform to the, to the R B zone setbacks. That's why you're here, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So it's a new home. In effect, it becomes a new house.
Yes.
It's not an addition and an alteration to an existing foundation.
Correct.
It's a new home. So that's where we're at. It has to conform to the setbacks in the R B zone, which are six feet, eighteen combined side yard setback, twenty-five front yard setback, thirty rear.
Yes.
Forty-four F A R, forty, forty percent lot coverage and twenty-three percent building coverage, correct?
All those coverages and the F A Rs were under that, just the setbacks.
Mm-hmm.
Just because it's a narrow lot and most of the lots on the block are such.
They are narrow. Correct. Yours is not the only house in that area that's on a narrow lot.
Yeah.
Yeah. But the other homes also came before the board. So just a little brief history on Charles Street. They're on the size lots.
Did you do any type of analysis or comparison that you present to the board as to what similar setbacks are within your neighborhood?
Based on the analysis of the architect, he, he put that in the plans, what the setbacks are and what our proposed are, and if they meet or not.
So what we, the board needs for consideration is, is for the architect to be here to present this, to present the analysis. So be it the architect or be it planner or an engineer, we need, we need some, we need some testimony put on the record so as to meet the proofs for approval for this.
My understanding was that it's not a requirement, and those, that information is all on the list as we have it. I don't know if you guys have a copy of the plans, but the asterisks on.
Mr. Popal, I think what the board is trying to tell you is that you have to satisfy certain proofs. This is now not an existing house. The prior setbacks and all the other variances that might be required are now considered anew. What we're trying to tell you, and what I think the board is indicating, is they need some proofs. Proofs that you yourself may not be able to present. Because it is a brand-new construction. It's a new single-family dwelling, and that is how the board is viewing it. It is something that I think you should take under advisement and perhaps speak to your architect and have professionals' testimony that would provide perhaps the board greater clarity on what they might be able to approve. Because right now, just because those were the prior setbacks, once you remove the foundation, it's no longer pre-existing. You understand that, right?
Yeah, but the foundation is not totally removed. It still stands.
But you still have a portion of the foundation removed, and as you just indicated to Mr. Devey, that you've, you're taking, you've basically demolished more than fifty percent. Pretty much, it's a single-family new construction, correct?
Yes, it'll be considered that after.
Okay, so, so under those circumstances, you really do require some greater proofs than what you're currently able to present. If you proceed today, the board could vote. If they vote not in your favor, it could be a problem for you. Or you could come back and choose to come back and consult with your professionals and perhaps see what testimony is required, because it is a new single-family dwelling.
Are there any type of particular questions that you guys may have that perhaps I can satisfy?
I can't advise you. I don't know if the board wants to. I, that's really not the board's job. It's your application. We're just telling you, you know, that the proofs right now, what you're presenting, don't appear to satisfy the legal requirements the board has to consider. Okay? Was there a prior resolution on this matter to allow for the demolition addition? There was no prior resolution by this board, right? It was never before the zoning board. Okay. Okay. Your decision, sir.
Obviously, your opinion matters a lot, so whatever is your advice, I would like to.
So this is our advice. So we're giving you a second bite at the apple.
Okay. Then I'll go, go through that route if it's, if it's recommended.
Okay. All right. So then we'll carry for another evening. Madam Secretary?
If you think you can have the documents provided, we can offer you June seventeenth to come back?
Yeah, as soon as you can.
As soon as, yeah.
I asked if, if an architect was required. I didn't know he was. If, if he was, then I certainly would have brought him. I thought it was straightforward because the lot was, the house.
We get it. We're going in circles here. We're going in circles here, sir. We already covered that. Okay? So we need, we're going to need testimony from an architect.
Okay. What type of testimony, just so I can specify to the architect?
Your architect will know that. He needs to speak to the variances, because you have not met your proofs for the variances you're requesting.
Okay.
All right. Okay. So for anyone here present, for anyone listening at home, this case will be carried to June seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five, with the meeting beginning here at seven P M. Here in council chambers. Thank you very much. Good evening.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to, I have to recuse for the next application, so the board will be in the trusted hands of Vice Chairman O'Gorman. Rachel, next case?
Case number Z, case number Z fifteen, two thousand twenty-five, Michelle Campbell at Four Fielding Place. Applicant is seeking bulk variances to construct a new single-family dwelling. The following standards have not been met. Minimum rear yard setback required is sixty feet, proposed is forty-six point forty-two feet. And max height permitted for a fence is four feet, proposed is six feet. Affected property is located in R A zone designated as block number five five seven point oh four, lot number five, on the Edison Township tax map. All noticing paperwork is in order.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. Would you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, self-y god?
I do.
And state your full name for the record?
Michelle Campbell.
Okay.
So I'm here tonight requesting, as Madam Secretary has asked, rear yard setback and a front yard fence, bulk variances sought to construct a new single-family dwelling at Four Fielding Place. The property is located at block five five seven point oh four, lot number five, in the R A zone. I have owned and resided at this property since July nineteen ninety-seven. So is there preferences to which variance I should start with, the rear yard or the fence?
Whatever you're comfortable with.
Okay, I'll start with the rear yard. So the rear yard setback required is sixty feet. Proposed for the new build, the new dwelling, is forty-six point four-two feet. My existing home currently is at fifty point twenty feet. So this is a non-conforming lot. So first, the difference, what I'm asking, is three point seven eight feet from my existing. Like I said, this lot is non-conforming. The depth, the minimum depth required in this zone is a hundred and fifty feet. And the average of my property is one twenty-two point eighty-three. As far as, so it's a deficit of twenty-seven point seventeen feet from what is required. And as I stated, this is non-conforming. So therefore, I'm here asking for a variance for the rear yard setback. All the other setbacks are within the requirement.
Okay, thank you. Any, any board members, any questions?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, why do you need a six-foot fence up front?
Well, I have an in-ground pool. So, you know, currently I have my, my backyard fenced in, and as I stated, I've lived here since ninety-seven. I would love the opportunity to enjoy my whole yard, you know, especially since my back is so short. My side yards are bigger, and I do spend a lot of time outside. So the fact that I have the in-ground pool and because of the short depth, you know, it probably will, it will be a picket, you know, a metal picket fence. It won't be solid. So I would, you know, I would just prefer to have the six-foot, as well as the fact that I do have larger dogs. I've never had a four-foot fence. I just think it would be safer for them, not for jumping. But really, the main reason is the pool.
So all the three sides are wooden fence?
Currently. So it's four sides. The side and the back is a chain link, six-foot fence, but I have slats in them for privacy.
They are six-foot?
Yes.
Okay.
And the front, you know, the front part of the fence, which is really the backyard, is a six-foot. I've always had a six-foot.
So there wouldn't be picket fence, so you'll have the.
This would be a metal picket fence, just so, you know, for visual, lack of visual obstruction.
Okay.
And then the other reason that I kind of was doing this was I wanted to have a gate for my driveway, because it's a, people love FedEx. Everybody loves to turn in it. So when I decided to do the gate, that's when I figured maybe it would be nice to kind of go to the, you know, full front.
And currently, you don't have any fence around, just the pool?
Yes. No, not just the pool. Like, the backyard is fenced in.
Okay.
But not, you know, the pool is within the backyard fencing.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
So the picket fence will be alongside the whole front edge of the house?
Yes.
Okay.
You know, the, the front yard.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Are there any other houses that have a, a six-foot fence in the front yard?
Um, the block across, you know, I'm on Fielding. I don't know what the name is on Charlie Brown's block. They do have one. They're, as people are building, they're putting them in.
Do you have an address?
Whether it's four feet or six feet, it depends. There are lots of very different, you know, they are not as wide. They're deeper. So I don't know what's going on behind and, you know, what they require. But I just, like I said, it's mostly for the pool. That's the biggest reason. Either way, I want a fence in the front yard, because I'd like to utilize. When I'm in the backyard, I feel sort of like my front yard is isolated from the rest of my, you know, my property. So I really want to enjoy the whole thing, especially that I do have the dogs. Like, right now, I keep my fences locked. Like, my both, the gates I have, I keep them locked.
Then you have to because of the pool.
Exactly. Exactly.
Do you have anyone else for testimony, or?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else? Go ahead. Sure.
Would it, would it be considerable to not put the six-foot fence in front of the house? Just put it in front of the driveway possibly, and just move it back a little bit?
Well, interesting. So right now, my garage is in the front of the house, my existing home. We will be having the garages on the side of the house now. So by doing that, that would make things more challenging to fence off, right? Because now the driveway, instead of just being in the front yard, so now like the side of the house, the fence comes. When you have a driveway going down, I can't go across the middle of, you know, I can't go across the middle of the driveway with a backyard fence. I definitely have to have a fence up because of the pool.
Yeah, no, I understand. The currently shows you have the pool, you have the six-foot fence existingly covering the pool. I get that. My only concern, as Mr. Chair previously mentioned, no one else on that road has a fence in the front yard. So that's what I was considering, if you'd consider just putting it in front of the driveway alone, not the whole front edge. So that's what I was considering, if you'd consider just putting it in front of the driveway alone, not the whole front edge.
But then what would I do with the back? Because that's what I'm saying, because now that the driveway is on the side, then that means that, that on, if you're looking at the home, on the left side of the house where the driveway is now, the fence is going to have to be behind the driveway.
Yeah, you're gonna have to make it behind the driveway.
Which would be, that's, that's a lot of land that I'm losing.
It's also the same 12-foot setback variance that you're requesting, that your lot is lacking, so it's gonna have to be behind the driveway if you're gonna go that approach.
If I go six, if I go six feet?
I'm not talking about the fence. I'm saying because of your lot being short from the back.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You're gonna have to move it behind the asphalt driveway. If that's the approach you wanna take.
Right. That's what I'm saying. If I don't go with the whole front yard fence, if I'm not granted that variance.
Anything else?
Four foot is allowed, correct?
Correct.
It's just I'm requesting the six-foot.
Right, Miss Aya? Four foot is allowed.
Yeah, four foot is allowed. So either way, I wanna do the fence, is what I'm saying. You know, people are, you know, homes are constantly being rebuilt in this neighborhood now. So like I said, as homes are coming up, things are changing. Like when I first moved into this neighborhood, nobody had a fence. So that was like devastating to the neighborhood. But I had dogs, and then I put the pool in, and, you know, things changed, so...
Just for the sake of an argument, other peoples have dog as well, and four-foot fence is enough to keep the dog in the yard.
Yes.
Right, so that's, you're saying you need six-foot because of the dog?
Sorry, yes. But some people also have dogs and don't even have a fence, right? I mean, because I, you know, they just don't walk out.
You need a fence because of the, uniform because of the pool.
Exactly.
You don't need to put that fence around the whole property. You can be just limited around the pool, and that would satisfy the code.
Yeah, but I, right, if I go with six-foot. I want my fence. Either way, I'm going to have my yard fenced in. Whether I'm, you know, again, if I'm, I would love to be granted the additional two feet in the front because that's really what we're talking. Because either way, I wanna put a front yard fence. I wanna utilize my whole land.
It would look odd to have a six-foot fence in front of the house.
I mean, the house that has it across the street behind on Charlie Brown's, I think theirs looks amazing.
Six-foot fence in front?
Yeah. Yep. And he's got double, he's got a U driveway. It's a huge house.
Have you seen it?
I have not seen it, no. Do you have an address?
Oh, actually, it was part, I could tell you the street because they're on the 200-foot radius, but I only had to, I only had to go to the first couple of, actually, not Charlie Brown's, I keep saying Charlie's. I'm in the Mid-Touch and Country Club. I apologize. Charlie Brown's is gone now. But it was Oak Grove Lane. It's on Oak Grove Lane. But it's a, it's a brand-new, it's a huge house. It's big. But they have like a, you know, a U driveway. They've got two gated, you know, the driveways are both gated.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Anyone within, anything else for your testimony?
That's it.
All right, we're gonna go out. Anyone within 200 feet? Anyone who'd like to make a public comment? Anyone within 200 feet? Seeing no one? Anyone further than 200 feet from the property? Seeing no one? Making a motion to close the public session?
Mr. Chairman?
I gotta close it. Agree? Everyone all agree?
Yeah.
Aye.
Okay. All right, good.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve this application. It is a de minimis request. It is not detrimental to the neighborhood, not out of character with the neighborhood, and there are no objectives.
Sir, a second? Second. Is there a second?
Two seconds.
Okay, Mrs. Davey made the motion, and Doug Schneider seconded it. Roll call, please.
Mr. Chabra?
Yes to the motion.
Mr. Johnny?
Yes to the motion.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes to the motion.
Mr. Patel?
Yes to the motion.
Mr. Devay?
Yes to the motion.
Mr. Sadat Ha?
Yes to the motion.
And Vice Chair Gorman?
No on the motion. I don't think a six-foot fence should be put there. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for your time, everybody.
All right, enjoy.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. All right, we're gonna take a break. All right, take the, make the motion and go on a break. All right. We'll be on break. Thank you. Three minutes. Can I get a motion to return to public session?
Motion to return to public session.
Second.
Motion made by Vice Chairman Gorman, seconded by Mr. Schneider. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay? The ayes have it. Can I get a motion for the result of closed session?
Motion?
For?
To return from closed session?
No, we did that already. So I just need to authorize...
To authorize, okay. I should try this. I haven't made one of these before. I'd like to make a motion to authorize spending not to exceed $5,000 for the, do I have to specify that case? Can you help me with that?
So, yes, so it is with regard to Masir Ali, the appeal.
For the Ali Wali Notice of Appeal Litigation to not exceed $5,000 in cost.
I'll second.
Motion made by Mr. Schneider.
I'll be more prepared next time, Chairman.
Thank you. It's all right. We'll forgive you this time.